Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this special board supervisor meeting. If we could all stand, please, and do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jake, if you could do a roll call, please.
Keesha John.
Here.
Jim Mueller.
Here.
Stephen Combs.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So move.
Second.
Combs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
John.
Aye. Onto business. Today, we are here to speak about Des Moines River Bridge, which was called the Old Dollar Bridge, that is on 216th Place and right off of T-17 and 216th Place. On Wednesday evening, we were notified approximately between eight and nine o'clock in the evening, the board was notified that a pier on that bridge had shifted. And so I have asked that we call a special meeting, and I'm going to ask the engineer to come to the podium and to speak a little bit about what he sees and what we could be looking at.
Yeah, so we had a partial collapse of the two north truss spans, so the center truss and the north truss. I think there's also damage to the north pier, which supports the south end of the north approach. So a lot of work is there. But basically, the north two-thirds of the bridge has sustained damage. I have not physically been down to the south spans to review. Just looked at some drone photos that Sheriff's Office took for us and reviewed those videos and photos. And for the most part, the south two spans, so the approach and the south truss, did not seem to have any major damage at this point. However, the partial collapse of the other portion, you know, likely could result in a full collapse of those spans. I think all three of you have indicated, or my staff has witnessed you all being out there, and so you've all laid eyes on it and understand the situation. So the first couple of calls that we made, obviously, we knew it was a historic structure. That designation was made in nineteen ninety-eight. Yeah, nineteen ninety-eight. It was placed on the historic places, very distraction. And so my first couple of calls were to the, to SHIPO, the state historic preservation office. And then there's also an office of Iowa DOT that deals specifically on historic bridges. I did talk to her today, Sarah Andre. She's actually from Pala area, but very familiar with the bridge. Grew up in Pala. So I had good conversations with them. They were very informative. I guess the, I provided to you ahead of this meeting, the covenant that is the kind of the agreement that was put into place actually after it was already placed on the historic registry. So in nineteen ninety-nine, it was placed on the historic registry. And then in two thousand, the covenant came into play, at which point the bridge was closed to vehicular traffic. And this covenant is pertinent to the pedestrian and recreational use that persisted up Wednesday evening.
So I think the key points of the covenant would be in stanza number one, paragraph number one, that Marion County agrees to retain all legal and financial responsibility of this historic bridge. That's just one clause out of that statement. But more importantly, in paragraph six, this covenant is binding, dot, 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 for as long as the bridge is maintained for pedestrian and recreational use. That will come into play here in a minute when I talk about what Sarah's comments were. And then, "At such time that the truss bridge is damaged or deterioration of structural members by natural causes, may become unsafe as a load-bearing structure, the county shall have sole responsibility regarding disposition." I think that's pretty clear. That was also very clear in the conversations I had with SHIPO and DOT's Historic Bridge Office. So one of the questions I had for them was, we've had partial historic bridge collapses in the past where we've removed, the difference being the portions that collapsed were not what was relevant as far as its historic designation. In this case, we have portions of the bridge that were relevant in its historic designation that have partially collapsed or will likely collapse completely. So one of my main questions was, what do we have to do basically to get approval, even though we are legally and financially responsible? So that's pretty straightforward, actually. Marion County would have to submit from our bridge inspector, who has knowledge in historic structures, which ours does, because Marion County has historic structures that we inspect on a routine basis. We have historic structures that are currently open to vehicular traffic. So our current bridge inspection consultant, we've already reached out to him and are asking for this letter because also in paragraph six, which I did not read to you out loud, states that qualified registered engineer mutually agreed upon, which they verbally agreed upon with me.
That's what I have a problem with, that part there, but is...
They want them to have knowledge of historic bridges, is what that means.
Yeah.
And they concurred verbally that our bridge inspector would because we have other historic structures. He's already...
So it's just about the historic structure. You know where I'm coming, where I'm headed.
That was one of my first questions when I called.
I mean, why do we want to pay somebody an outrageous fee to tell us that the bridge is falling down?
Right. Right. So a letter from him will suffice. They verbally agreed to that. And once we get a, so we will submit that through the eSHIPO. I set up an account yesterday for that. We will submit his letter, a cover letter of ours, with pictures and an explanation of how things transpired here. And once we submit those, then we will get a letter from Sarah's office.
Explain what Sarah is.
Sarah is...
Sounds like just a person's name, and we need to make sure that...
Sarah is the deputy SHIPO reviewer, specifically with DOT Bridge. I don't know her full title, I guess. That was from another lady, SHIPO. So she's the one who is the most averse in bridges and works closely with...
But her name's not Sarah. It's just the acronyms.
No, Sarah is her name.
Oh, Sarah is her name.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I just want to make sure that I understood what you were saying.
Yeah, so once we submit these, Sarah said she will likely be the reviewer or someone in her office, and they will provide concurrence of those documents, basically stating that, yeah, the historic structure has sustained damage.
So they're okay with...
In accordance with this clause and is per, is...
They're okay with the current bridge inspector that we have, that we utilize at this point. They're okay with his qualifications to cover that, right?
I got verbal concurrence from Sarah and from Heather at the SHIPO office.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And we will know that fairly quickly, I think, upon submitting these documents. But no written.
How quickly will the bridge inspector get there? I'm assuming he's going to have to look at it and then write the letter?
I mean, he may just look at the photos we sent. I have not, Jay sent everything to him yesterday.
Is he local, or where is he? I don't...
West of mine.
Okay.
They're our, our bridge inspecting consultant. And he's typically very responsive to issues.
I was hoping that would be the case, Tyler. Because like I said, that would chat me if we had to hire an outside engineering firm to tell us the bridge was falling down.
Right, right. So we're already under contract with this firm that our bridge inspector works for. And I'm sure it will be minimal cost, but we already have hourly rates established for extras besides normal, routine bridge inspections. So I think that part is taken care of. You know, with verbal concurrence, I don't think that will be an issue to get these documents submitted and get that concurrence from them, from SHIPO office. You know, they understand what's transpired here, that this is no longer viable for repair or rehabilitation to maintain its historic relevance. Going back to the first part of paragraph six in that covenant, I wanted to be clear with her that it's possible that we remove only part of the bridge. It's also possible that we remove it in its entirety while we're there. We'll have to consider that. And just not jumping ahead, but my recommendation is going to be to remove the damaged spans at absolute minimum. But it says the covenant is binding, dot, 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 for as long as the bridge is maintained for pedestrian and recreational use. My statement to them was, because the north three spans were damaged, and that's where public access is from, that the remaining spans are no longer viable for pedestrian or recreational use, in my opinion. They agreed with that also.
Right.
And they would understand if we were to remove them in their entirety. And I would probably put that in that cover letter, if that's our intent, is to remove the bridge in its entirety. So continuing on with the research of just kind of anything that we needed to do initially here. We contacted our US Army Corps of Engineers, talked to a couple of different folks there. They are not aware of any permitting or anything we need to do in the near future or immediately. Anything we would do regarding demolition or removal of the Dollar Bridge would be through normal permitting. So when we would build a bridge, there's a process. Same way with the DNR, for the most part. There were a couple unknowns there, which I have not heard back from the sovereign lands office. Typically, we would permit things through sovereign lands through other permitting processes, such as floodplain or what they call the joint permit process. However, Boone County, I talked to Boone and Brimmer County, who both have had historic truss bridges collapse into a river, Cedar River and Des Moines River. So I picked their brain about experiences they have had. In Boone County, sovereign lands was very involved. And they had some requirements during the removal about the depth of removal of abutments and piers and those sort of things. What nobody has been able to answer yet, Boone County and the DNR, excuse me, would be, they had a DNR-managed Corps of Engineer property on both sides adjacent to that bridge. We don't have that here. We have basically private property other than the road easement on the north. So that may be the difference of why sovereign lands had so much input in that particular case with Boone County. And after talking to them, I guess I did not go back to Brimmer County and ask if they encountered something like that with sovereign lands. Nonetheless, they will be involved through what we call normal permitting with the DNR Corps of Engineers, just like we were to go do a bridge repair replacement on any other waterway. If the bridge was to collapse into the water, the Corps may, may then become more involved because we now have this very large obstruction in the floodway. And the Rock Island District may then get involved. They weren't sure, but likely they would have some input about additional overbank flooding. You know, if this was to collapse, it's a giant debris catcher. Would more water over the bank create impacts above what is the normal flood, hundred-year flood elevation?
Would that occur if it wasn't removed? Or are they talking about during the process of removing?
I think what they're saying is if it collapsed and was sitting there and we had no immediate plan for removal.
Okay.
So let's just say the entire three truss spans were laying in the river right now. They may be starting to run some numbers with spring rains, you know, on the horizon.
Right.
So we don't have that right now. But the Corps is aware of what's going on. That is not to say that the bridge cannot be in the river. It sounds likely that it's going to be easier to remove if it is lying in the river versus picking it up from its current resting point as the whole thing is racked and twisted and whatnot. So my other call, DOT, they don't care other than the historic bridge structures portion that I talked to. So we did reach out to a couple contractors, local bridge contractors that we would typically work with. Iowa Bridge in Culver just did the Flagler Bridge out of Washington, Herberger out of Indianoa, just to get some, try to get some rough ballparks. One of them was driving by, he took a look at it. He does not have any experience with this large of a bridge removal. Herberger has, indicated that, actually, both indicated it would be easier if it was lying in the water to remove the trusses. Boone County, sorry.
Do they have the means of laying it in the water?
Iowa Bridge was, so Herberger has not actually returned our call after thinking about it. They, just initial conversations with them. Iowa Bridge has gotten back to us. They, they would like to explore the options for getting it in the water. They said they would not have cranes large enough. They would have to have at least two to lift one span. And so they'd be renting two very large cranes that they don't, they don't even know if they could get locally right now.
Right.
Or, you know, timely fashion. So Herberger indicated, yeah, it would also be easier. They hadn't laid eyes on it, and they haven't called us back with any other information or research. I will say Boone County, they had multiple span trusses, I think four or five trusses. Couple of those ended up in the river, some did not. It sounds like they did use explosives to bring the rest of the structure into the river and then drug everything out with dozers, it sounds like, had a contractor come in and do that work. So...
I will tell you...
There is a way to get them in the river.
Okay, yeah, because when the VA ground bite, they have a division of explosives. But again, we have to think about the property that's around it and the homes. You know, so, yeah, those are all things that make me a little nervous, make me very nervous, so.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a way to do it. It's just...
It probably wouldn't take much...
What's feasible, what's cost-effective.
It probably wouldn't take much to bring it rest the way down.
Yeah, Boone County indicated that they had some of the piers, they were able to just go in on the causeway and push over with the excavator. Basically, those caisson were just sitting on the river bottom, which I think is probably what happened here. We don't know exactly what those are filled with or how much of it was concrete or rubble filled. There are no piles typically. So it could have just undermined, could have rusted, could have buckled. You know, there's no visible caisson damage, but we obviously understand it lost its footing somehow. What's that?
They might be able to pull it the rest of the way over from the bank.
That, that's possible, yes. There is a little additional permitting to build a causeway. Our last major experience with that was building the Des Moines River Bridge twenty-one years, two years ago now. But there's a little bit of extra permitting, but again, that's all not uncommon as far as bridge repair and construction. So Iowa Bridge in Culver gave us, again, a ballpark number. Ryan has not been involved with anything himself, so he's quoting this, never having experienced with something quite this large. He's at half a million minimum for removal of the structure entirely. You know, that's our estimation.
The structure and the entire structure?
Yeah, the entire structure, yeah.
But not the piers? You'd abandon the piers, or is that including the piers?
That would include the piers, yeah. I, and that, again, that's a ballpark. I'm honestly thinking that might be low. I mean, he said...
Well, you know what bothered me?
Minimum.
Yeah.
Half a million, minimum.
I think that, you know, whatever we leave, if we leave anything, we still have, we're still going to have perpetual liability if we make it into, if we make it into some kind of a walk place or something. But the south side is irrelevant in my mind because it's all for private property. Nobody can access it anyway.
And then we still have responsibility of that segment as well.
Yeah. I say that if we're going to take it down, we take down the whole thing.
Well, I don't disagree.
Tyler, could you update us on what you've done to secure?
Oh, right. Probably should have started with that. Yeah, we have fenced off the north end. I did not actually check. I ensured we got the south, the north end done. I'll have to verify we got the south end completed. We were going to do something similar on the south end.
Tyler, I was there this morning. The south end is barricaded off. I think it's been barricaded off because there's hog, there's cattle fencing there and signs and...
Okay.
I've got pictures of it.
Yeah, we'll verify. And we did put signage up there also, kind of some regulatory signage about county property. I have to look at my picture, exactly what it says, but no admittance beyond this point or something like that. And we did put...
We can only do what we can do.
No trespassing.
You can only protect people from themselves for so long, I mean...
Right. And we all know what, how effective signs are. A bridge unsafe, we also have a bridge unsafe. So there's multiple signs there of danger warnings, no trespassing. I mean, we can sure look at what else, but, you know, might be necessary there. But, you know, in similar situations, the last couple of years, we've used similar signs. I mean, the road was already closed of vehicular traffic.
We hired Rick. We'll hire you to guard it.
So the...
No, here, here's how we found out about it.
The boat ramp that is partially in the right-of-way, you have put barricades there so people cannot get in, put the boat ramp.
Correct, yeah, there's a road enclosed there. Yeah, I guess I have not legally, that's not been legally surveyed to know for sure, but right now, you know, it's definitely within the proximity. We don't want anybody utilizing that. It appears to be partially within the right-of-way.
They want to put a boat in.
Well, I'm just saying. I mean, I think we have to do our due diligence.
And that brings up a good point. A conversation we've had with the DNR also would be water trails. So this has come about here recently. Any designated water trail within Iowa has to be signed during bridge repair or construction. So if somebody's working on a bridge and could drop something over the edge or there are hazards related to that work and somebody's kayaking or boating, contractors have to erect signs as part of projects. That's now part of our project development. So we contacted them. We've never had to do that. We have, in Marion County at least, this is a fairly new requirement, but we haven't had a waterway that's been designated yet. Obviously, this would fall into that category. So we are just asking, what are the signs? What spacing and distance do they need to be to appropriately warn people? That will be pertinent now and during...
Are they signs that are on, at the ground, on the edge, on the bank? Or are they on buoys?
I'm not sure. I remember a training a couple of years ago, they talked about putting them at certain distances away on the bank or at, if there's near access, like, let's say kayak portage area or access area within so many feet, they have to place one there also. And then Jay said, he attended the pre-con last week when I was gone for the mile-long bridge. You know, they discussed how are they going to appropriately sign that out in the middle of the lake? So we're looking into that, but there will be some immediate requirement there as well as more once we get into demolition.
So at a bare minimum, we're looking at $500,000.
Yeah, that's one, that's one ballpark from one contractor that does not have direct experience with scope and scale of this project. So we haven't heard back from others. Boone, I don't know if I gave you Boone County's number. So they drug one of the spans out, I believe, by themselves and helped build the causeway. This was ten or twelve years ago, and they were still around the $300,000 mark for the removal of the remaining spans.
So Tyler, you've got the pier sections.
So it's going to be...
But then you also have a concrete section more towards the south.
Right.
That seems like that would be a bigger, you know, to be able to get that out of there.
A concrete pier, yeah, possibly.
Yeah.
Depends on what the method is for removal. It may or may not be that definite.
There's a lot more of them already in the river, downriver.
As I say, why don't bother removing it? Take the steel down to, that concrete pier isn't going to fall on anybody.
And that may be a discussion and depending on what sovereign lands or DNR requirements there may or may not be. I mean, yeah, it's unlikely to fail.
So Tyler, overall, your recommendation to the board?
My recommendation would be that we pursue removal in its entirety of the Dollar Bridge.
Okay, all right. I would ask that between yourself, the sheriff's office, we have chief deputy here with us, if there could be communications on what we need to do to make sure boaters, because it is becoming this time of year. I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence there. Our county attorney is with us. Do you have anything that you need us to be thinking of?
I don't think so, I mean...
Can you grab the mic, please?
I think that, obviously, the posted notices are important. I think that we should probably consider sending out some sort of press release to the county in general. I mean, we're obviously having an open meeting here today, but the more folks that we can let know about this, the better off we are. But without, I'll speak with the sheriff's office and Tyler about, you know, some of the issues we're talking about here. But at the moment, as long as it's posted and people are on notice...
So then that would also, if there is a notice there, you know, no trespassing, that gives the authority for the sheriff's department to do, you know, citations if need be. We need to make sure, I think it's something similar that what we did with the sinkhole, that we need to send out on the press release, that, you know, not to be there. So, and to ask that extra patrol be there.
Yeah, we did not post, we did post no trespassing signs because at the sinkhole, we had road closed, which also means no trespassing. We do not have road closed here.
Right, because it's not...
A regular road.
But you have no trespassing.
We have no trespassing in another one. I can't, the language is saluting me, what it says exactly.
All right.
My help on that is pass the two driveways going to either one of the lot areas.
Yeah.
And then barricade it across there instead of allowing them to drive all the way.
Sorry, so that the people online...
Instead of allowing them to drive all the way up to the barricade that's right through the bridge.
So we could still maintain, right, we could still maintain access from, to those drives.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would deter some foot traffic. We still want to have the signage that we've already established at the bridge itself, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, from where the drives go back upriver and then the one that goes to the downriver side, there's probably a hundred yards there from those two accesses to the bridge that people would still be able to drive up to, past those two driveways.
Okay.
And that might be a good spot to detour a little bit more when people driving up there to the bridge.
And we witnessed a boat going under the bridge this morning. Yeah. That's what you're doing when...
Yeah, they ain't ever going to stop.
They're not going to stop that. You just don't want them loitering there, fishing.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't hang out there.
Hey, my question to Tyler is, whoever, is there any possibility of any grants or funding to offset our costs?
Yep, unlikely. So I talked to SHIPO. Derelict building program through the Iowa DNR is the only possibility they had in mind. Boone County's project was on a farm-to-market route. Ours is not, ours, it's not a federal structure. It's not a, it's not a farm-to-market route. So it's a local road, local bridge, unfortunately. So that was the only insight I got. Brimmer and Boone County, neither one had any alternative funding options that they were aware of. There is a thread on the County Engineers Association website about this topic, and there's that particular topic of funding, historic bridge removal. And there's nothing, there is for preservation, but...
So...
So what are we looking at then? We're looking, tapping the general fund to pay for that?
Well, our local option sales tax, that fund is pretty much for the Junction 92, I believe. Is that correct? The rest of the funding that's put in there? Is there much... The, the rest of the funding that's put in there, is there much money left in there?
Uh, yes and no, I mean. We have not expended the money, so there's a balance right now.
Correct, I know there's balance, but we had.
I believe the balance. At the end of FY twenty-five, which we're in now, so at the end of the June, if all funds from Junction were expended, there would still be a couple hundred thousand dollar balance. Hundred eighty-five rings a bell.
Not, not a lot, right.
Plus the revenues we would receive in fiscal year twenty-five, six.
Yeah.
So, ye- yes and no, I mean, there is some money there as a balance, but, and we would, and we would, uh, have that. Revenue coming in, it was a monthly, so.
These are the one offs that make it difficult, and, um, I have reached out to Representative Bowden and Representative McCollum, uh, Kenev McCollough. Explained what was going on, um, I asked them, you know, to be thinking, but I also reminded them, when we have this property tax bills that are coming at us. These are the one offs that I don't know that they think about, and this is gonna impact our general fund. Um, you know, how, we gotta be able to pay our bills, and this is gonna put a strain on us. Um, you know, not knowing exactly how much this is gonna cost, but I think we have to do the right thing. I think that it's important that we get quotes and that we give Tyler the directive of getting quotes and then coming back to the board. And then we do our due diligence and making sure people, um, the public is aware.
We will have to do a formal bid, just clarity on language, then we would not be able to do quotes. They would, this, this, for the project, we would do have a formal bid letting, we do that locally, however.
It'll have to be engineered.
I agree, there's no, there's no doubt we have to do something because of the liability issues. Unfortunately, it's just gonna cost us.
It is.
And I would recommend that we do a complete removal too, now whether that includes the piers or not, I, I, I'm. I question whether you really need to remove the piers, as long as you got all, anything that could fall removed. But I think you'd wanna take the entire span, even the one that's, to your recommendation, I'd take them all, I mean, take everything. But leave the piers would be my.
We've found, you know, you might as well, you're there, you might as well do it, versus trying to have them come back.
Cause otherwise you're just kicking the problem down the road for the next guy, and I'm not a big fan of that.
And it's still our liability, and if something was to happen or a decision to remove it later, it would be even more difficult to access at that point.
Yep.
And we do not have any public access from that end.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, originally I was thinking it may make sense, but I, I don't, my recommendation is to remove it.
It'd be different if you had access to the other, other side.
Right.
But you know, I mean, it's private, private property, so.
So, Tyler, how long did, how, how long does, would this take to get some of this?
Oh, to get bids, uh, put, put a project together?
Yep.
I mean, it's gonna take thirty days, absolute minimum.
Yeah.
I mean, technically, we could. We could probably get some type of emergency exemption, may, maybe, I mean, it's not in the river, is the thing. So I, I don't know for sure, but could we probably circumvent bidding, maybe, but. I think this is a big enough demolition, they probably should go to pit anyway.
Probably gonna be too many people bid on.
Well, that, yeah, and, and in the, to earlier conversations about. Removing it from its current stance or in the water, I think we'll wanna be kinda creative in our language to, to allow for options.
Right, right.
To that effect.
Hmm.
Because there was, there were some comments on the County Engineers Association about that very thing. That the difficulty of removing trusses is, especially if they're wadded up and twisted and out of place. Contractors don't like the unknowns about that, so.
Board, do you have any other questions for Tyler? If not, I'd entertain a motion to give him the directive of seeking bids to, um, remove the entirety of the bridge. How do you want?
I mean, before we do that, I mean, we would. Wanna have a funding source, I think, I guess that's my opinion, like, we would wanna have.
It's not gonna come from your fund, cuz you don't have it, I think it's gonna be that, I mean, it, to me, it's, we're probably looking at the general fund if we're. Putting it, having it come out of this budget cycle. Jake, do you have any thoughts?
That's what the general fund reserve is for.
Yep.
Um, depending on how long this takes, I mean, if it needs to be engineered and public hearings and bid. That, if it's that normal construction, deconstruction process, that's gonna take a while, it may not be in this fiscal year.
Correct, and, and, and there could be such a thing that if we have, I mean.
Uh, we're at March already.
Yeah.
End of March.
First of, yeah, first of April.
About the time payoffs are due and things like that.
So we may have some local option sales tax funds, but, but it may not, I mean, I'm, to me, we're looking at general fund at this point.
And you may have an earlier expenditure to, um. I don't know about the process, I haven't talked to Tyler, but if it's like building a building, if there's an engineering. Um, to, to create the bid package and stuff, I don't know if that's something that you guys are doing in-house or an engineer is doing that, but there'll be that upfront cost that, that will just be absorbed.
From my perspective, quite frankly, is, it's a liability issue, it's a danger issue, we just need to get it down, we'll figure out how to pay for it at some future point in time.
I, I think that, uh, and Tyler, if, if by chance, then, you know, if the bridge does start to fall, I mean, you know, is that something then? I mean, when you're looking at these bids, I mean, what do we do if we're, we put it out for a bid and then all of a sudden it falls? And then that changes the scope, I mean, is it maybe?
It'll definitely, it'll definitely change the scope of the bid.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we would just have to have some note language to that effect.
And the language would have to be.
Right, cuz that is likely.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know what spring weather is gonna do, and a high flow event could easily put this thing in the river.
You know, you talked about the waterway, how, what, how, I don't know why, how you worded that, Tyler, like for kayakers, what, what was?
Water trails.
Water trail.
Yeah.
You know, exactly what the Silver's just said, that boats coming down underneath there, do, when, do we really need to get right away? Post something at the boat ramps up above?
Yeah, yeah, we're waiting on what that signage has to say, Jay's already called the person that we need to call. Just waiting on their response of what that needs to say.
Okay.
To be compliant with that provision, just cuz we have never had experience with that on a project yet, so.
Well, it's always something new in Marion County.
Yeah.
And Tyler, I appreciate your due diligence, this has been a lot the last couple of years, everything that's been kinda thrown at you, so, um.
Art of the job here.
Yeah, so, with that, board, if there's no, um, further questions? You, is there a motion to give directive towards Tyler, or what's your thoughts?
Well, I would make the motion, but I don't know how to word it. Uh. I think Tyler knows what direction he has to go.
It would be to seek bids. You wanted to use, do you want us to use the terms, term bids, or do you want us to use some other terminology, are you good with that?
No, I'm, that's what we're gonna do, that's my recommendation, seek bids.
Is that the entire, the necessary?
We're gonna seek the cost of demolition.
Yep, of the, the entire bridge.
And whatever that would take for project development, like it may take some. Work or some recommendations from outside sources for that, like that that you're alluding to, yeah. Yeah, and specifics too, if, if there are alternatives to get that thing down. We, we, that we don't have experience with, we would be looking for others for that.
I don't know how to word it.
I can proceed with. Project development for a bridge, bridge demolition of the Dollar Bridge and, and subsequently obtaining bids for demolition.
I make a motion on what Tyler recommended.
And also, Port.
John.
Aye.
Who comes?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Who comes?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
John?
Aye, thank you, everyone.